All right, everybody. This is a work session, it's not a regular council meeting, so that's why it's a little bit more in trouble than normal. But before we started, I wanted to take a few minutes to thank a few individuals who have gone above and beyond in helping our city move forward. This past spring, three young men with some citizen help with their scoutmaster chose the Gladstone Nature Park rehabilitation as their Eagle Scout project. This was not an easy undertaking. None of us wanted to be knee-deep in blackberries, poisonoof, and ivy, but their coordination, vision, and determination made such a huge difference in this nature park. Their community spirit and selfless giving are an inspiration to us all. So on behalf of the City of Gladstone, I would like to thank Matt Fergus, Benjamin Fergus, and Damian Foster for choosing the Gladstone Nature Park as their project, and thank their scoutmaster, Carson McVeigh, for inspiring them to be such amazing individuals. With that, we would like to present you with some certificates. And I don't know if other councilors would like ...
(applause)
Mayor? Yes. Would you mind going right over there and making a presentation? Oh, all right. Oh, on the camera? Oh. We are videotaping tonight. You have to start over. No, I'm just kidding.
(laughter)
Okay, so Benjamin? Certificate thanking you from the bottom of our hearts for the work that you did. Thank you very, very much. Damian Foster? Hello? Thank you very, very much. And if you have any ... And then we have ...
Look at all those badges.
Oh, that's an extra one. That's why it turned me off. And then Carson McVeigh. Could we do one joint picture with all of you and the mayor for our news letter?
Get everybody up there.
She's got a picture.
What an amazing picture you've got, you guys. Thank you so much. One, two, three. Thank you.
So, um, I have a quick little thing. And you guys are Eagle Scouts as well, right? Is that correct? You guys have earned that? Is that what you told me?
Yes.
Congratulations on that. And as an Eagle Scout, just remember when people ask you, "Are you an Eagle Scout?", it's never "I was", it always "I am". So that's something that you will be able to carry throughout your whole life. It got me a job in the Fire Bureau seventeen years ago when I had a pin on, and a Public Works interviewee noticed the pin, and he asked me, the first question was, "Are you an Eagle Scout?", and it was, "Yes". And only because my mom told me to wear it. I wouldn't have warned if she hadn't told me, but, uh, so, wear that with pride, gentlemen. It's a huge achievement, and well done. Thank you.
All righty. So, um, why don't we go ahead and let you guys get your dinner first, and then we will start in with our Parks Master Plan discussion.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. And thanks for the great job up there. A lot of people are enjoying it.
Counselors, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Now, Mayor Temple, thank you very much.
Don't be shy.
I think it's gonna be easier to go around the Eagle Scout. Okay.
Oh.
Are you gonna get some cheese?
Yeah, well, I just, yeah. I've got my phone buzzing in my pocket.
Oh, my gosh, we have messy today. That's what we have.
Oh, I'll ask him.
We have extra fries. We want you to talk with your mouth full.
You might need the energy.
How are you doing?
I'm good, thank you. Good. I'll give it to you. Kinda, sorry. I was worried about you. I must pay a little perp for you. I appreciate it. I know you've struggled.
Thank you.
How are you doing this evening?
Very good. About five thousand left over.
The farm? The farm? Where's your farm?
Terrebonne, Smitheroff.
Oh, okay. Terrebonne. Get a little Terrebonne.
Yep. They did a little event, and they were starting to do an event, and then they just never got off the ground. Nobody really signed up for it, so they ended up with ...
We need our little pizza guy down here to open it.
I took three hundred of them out this week.
Really? What's the big delay?
Well, that's what I heard.
The what?
How long are you opening?
The weekend?
It's kinda open pretty quick. And there was a, kinda, they had a bunch of beer, and just come burrow in there, enjoy, and watch the traffic.
My daughter and I drove down to the cemetery right before school.
They're planning on doing a breakfast restaurant. That's what they told us. No, that's the one that's behind Walgreens, the one next to Twenty Four Hour Fitness. It's mostly like chiropractor or doctor type. Because that's what they told us last time they came by.
No, I wouldn't ever drive anywhere very far to do it again.
I mean, they told us that you ... They told us it was gonna be specifically one that's mostly open just for breakfast.
Always, yeah, we definitely fixed that question.
They keep changing it because they're trying to get people to sign up. So until they actually find, it's really a ... But the last line they told us, they said, "We're not redlining, but they ..."
Well, no, no. We printed this offline, so the book uses ...
It was specifically gonna be like chiropractor type stuff.
As illustration, and also ...
Stuff that was similar to Twenty Four Hour.
Is there a pretty, kinda, pretty simple model?
Yeah. And how you look at this, you're gonna go to the ...
Never. I mean, it's changed a couple times. It might change again.
We even ordered in pizza a couple of times.
I don't even, I don't even touch the Wall Street stocks and bonds.
I don't have enough time.
Did you tell any of them to go see the Big Short? 'Cause that was fascinating. It's fascinating, trying to explain derivatives and ...
Oh, okay.
... securitization, and ...
If it was a regular class, I would, like, one night a week.
Right.
Or during, you know, summer school when it's, it's a sprint.
You don't have a count.
Yeah. It just, no. No.
Hey!
Good to see you.
First time to see you.
Oh, it's kinda, oh, did you ...
But not ...
I'll ask you a question. But here, look at, on our Public Works ...
Senior year.
See the draft right there? That's where you gotta go, and that's this whole driving thing.
Can you believe he's seniors?
Oh, no, that's, that's my sidewalk thing. We got the draft, and this, on our website is double ...
Yep. Yeah, but he's got college coming up. Having to adult.
We went through all those.
There's a change.
Okay, good, good.
I felt the same way when I was ...
Put your report away. Excuse me, man.
I was like, hey, you know, like, another five years. And they're like, no, doctors, I think.
Yeah, so what you went on there for sidewalk, and that's ...
Raven just gave this to me, and it scares me. I'm like, oh, uh, I don't think I'm in it.
You drastically put it in my plan thing, you know, and stuff, so, yeah. All right, cool. Okay, good.
Can't believe he's a senior.
I'll get the ball on, and it'll ... You said that on somebody?
He's a senior. You know, I'm really mature.
Do you agree with that?
Not. No.
Is this from the papers across the street? Tell him he could struggle with that for the rest of his life if he makes the choice to do so.
High boy, or something?
Well, he's doomed because he's around the firefighting. High boys, huh? No, it's two girls. It's not gonna happen. And now he's gonna, he wants to sign up for the Gladstone Fire Department. So, I'm doing awesome. So he's gonna, he's gonna choose firefighting for his career, probably? No, he wants to be a ranger here. Good! Yeah, so he's, there's a gentleman in Gladstone that owns his own firm with so Christian, it'd be difficult to get some kind of admission.
What's he wanna do, Tammy? Sorry.
Marie and Harry. I would assume, but I don't know for sure.
Did you tell him that there's this potential for ... In Gladstone, unfortunately.
So, Wilbur?
Down in the cemetery, which we ended up walking. And it's been a, so, we have to come back. Two and a half hours, just her dad. But we don't ...
Let me know. You know, you can't be in ...
How's Haley doing? She's, um, back home temporarily, and she is to the Army this weekend. She's moving to Las Vegas in October. How do I feel about that? Not very good, but ... I was thinking about her, 'cause there's an opening over at my building at the State Farm Insurance Office. But they're gonna want somebody that's gonna be sticking around. Well, Starbuck is a translator, and she also works for iHeart Media. Okay. And they need people down there. Her dad lives in Las Vegas right now. Ah. She has a family there. You look like you wanna start the meeting.
Yeah, I was just waiting for Tammy. We'll get going, I know you guys are coming in early, appreciate that, and we don't want you to be here till midnight.
Thank you.
Do we?
I appreciate the AC in here, 'cause outside it fucks.
Good deal. Well, welcome, and thank you again for coming in early. We've got two things we're gonna talk about tonight in this work session. One of them is the Parks Master Plan, and the other is our Design and Construction Standards. Both, we've been working on. The Parks Master Plan, we've been working on for about a year. The Design and Construction Standards, pretty much a year and a half, just totally after I started on, we started working on those. So we're gonna start with the Parks Master Plan. We have Steve Do here with Conservation Techniques. He's the one that, his company is the one that's putting together the plan. Like I say, we started over a year ago. Lots of community involvement. You know, some of those examples are mail, mail surveys, online surveys, and I'm sure Steve will talk about that, but we had a pretty impressive turnout for our population for those surveys. We had two community meetings, six stakeholder discussions, you know, like the schools and the baseball teams and stuff like that. Website, newspaper, My Sidewalk, this is the online website. Parks and Rec Board, which we have some members here tonight, and now you guys, you guys are all getting involved in this. So our next step is to incorporate your guys' comments tonight, and then any other comments we have, and then we're gonna, we're gonna cut off comments next Tuesday, August 29th. And the reason why is that's gonna give us a week to incorporate those comments, so that we can bring it to council meeting on September 12th for adoption. So that's kinda why we're, you know, we've been working on this a year now. We've been incorporating the comments, and so now we're getting down to the wire, so that's our goal, is to cut that off on the 29th, so Steve's company has basically a week to incorporate all those comments. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Steve, and I might sneak around the back and get anybody to hear you.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor, members of council, members of the Planning Commission. Again, my name's Steve Do with Conservation Techniques, and as Jim mentioned, my firm took the lead in pulling the draft Parks Master Plan together. For tonight, for the purposes of this joint work session, I put together a brief PowerPoint presentation just to give you an overview of the process, some highlights of what we heard from the community, and some of the high-level recommendations and suggestions that are in the plan document itself. So to start, what is this master plan that we're talking about? The Park Master Plan is intended to be a ten-year policy and strategic plan for the city to guide future planning and development and improvements for parks, natural areas, and recreation spaces across the city. Again, it's intended to be a policy guide and strategic plan, so it has goals and objectives in there, so the Planning Commission's probably, will probably dive into that. It's also a bit of a technical study in that we had professional landscape architects visit each and every park site, made clear notes on what they saw and opportunities that they could see. But with that, there's also the public process piece, so the survey that was completed, and the online documentation that went with that, all really add up to the document that's in front of you. It's intended also to serve a bit like a communications tool for the city, so when Jim is working with partners or receiving grant dollars, he can refer to this plan document and look at the content that's in there to say, "Here's the issue we are trying to address, here's what the public said, and here are the recommendations or projects that we put in the plan document with the support from the community." So it helps tell the story of where you are, where you want to be, and how you might get there. And again, as Jim mentioned, it's built on significant public process. In terms of putting the plan document together, it's a planned process much like any other city-based plan. In terms of community engagement, Jim already highlighted some of the inputs that went into the project. There was a community survey that was mailed out to two thousand households across the city. We had over five hundred responses, and I'll highlight some of those responses here in a moment. But we also had an online engagement tool that we utilized, as well as direct conversations with stakeholders, a pair of community open house meetings, and discussions and coordination with the Parks Board as well. So we tried to touch the community in a lot of different ways through the process itself. As I noted, the inventory and conditions assessment piece was one that was led by our landscape architects, who visited all the park sites, took notes on what's working well in the parks, opportunities for improvements or enhancements, suggestions about ADA compliance and the like, as well as looking for ideas on how to expand or improve any of the park sites to add recreational value for the community going forward. Between the community engagement piece and the, you know, physical assessments, that really helped us frame what we call a community needs assessment for the plan. It's really the core section of the planning document, it's chapter five, and it outlines what the community says it wants, as well as some of the technical information about what we saw, and starts to synthesize that information to identify potential recommended improvements or enhancements for the city's park system. That then translated into a master list of potential projects called the Capital Improvement Plan or Capital Facility Plan. I know you've got large format versions in front of you, and those are line item specific, project by project, and the intent there is to offer the city a master list of projects that, over time, the city could work toward achieving. It's really intended to be a guide for annual or biennial budgets. It's not a budget per se by itself, but it's intended, again, to be a good guide. And again, in terms of overall construction of the plan, after we put together the project list, we had to think about, how might the city accomplish these projects? So we spent a little time in the document to talk about implementation strategies, tools and tactics, and the like. Just rounding out the process piece, like, again, any other public plan process, there's the review and approval process. So we've had discussions with the Parks Board. We're here tonight to get your feedback, and ultimately it'll go to City Council in about three weeks. So that's the process in a nutshell. And, working to the mouth move. All right. So like I noted, we had a really strong response, the community survey. Five hundred and fifty-four responses overall, which is substantial. It's over twenty-some percent, twenty-five percent really, for a community. And for a community aside, that's terrific. I've worked in much larger communities with lower response rates. Still provide good information, but overall, the number of responses ...
Twenty-five percent would be three thousand, you'd be right.
We mailed out to two thousand, so the bulk of the responses were from that mailed-out survey. So overall, residents are really pleased and satisfied and supportive of the city's efforts in providing park and recreation amenities. Ninety-six percent say that parks and open space are essential or important to their quality of life here in Gladstone. Seventy-nine percent say that they're very, or somewhat satisfied with the value they get from Gladstone parks. And about three-quarters use parks at least once a month. That breaks down a little more finely when you look at the data, and about a third actually use parks once a week. So you've got really strong usage of the parks that you have, and I think people are happy to take advantage of the great facilities that you offer. There was a question in the survey to try to gauge sentiment about whether you've got enough parks, whether it's the right amount, you need more. So just under half said that the city's offering about the right amount of parks, but about forty percent say that there aren't enough parks and open spaces in the city. And this is a telling piece, because as I get a little deeper into the presentation, you'll note that we offered some ideas on future park acquisitions to hit some gap areas that are within the city that might address some of these responses. In terms of the types of things people would like to see improved or expanded across the city with park and recreation opportunities, paths and walking trails came out at the top, and honestly, that's no surprise, because within the metro region, and statewide, and actually nationally, walking and access to trails has been at the top of surveys for probably the last fifteen or twenty years. So it's consistently at the top, it's a low-cost activity, free activity, it's easy on body, and the whole family can do it. So it's an easy sort of activity for folks to be engaged in, so there's strong desire to have access to better trails and more trails. After that, there's interest in basically upgrading and enhancing what you have, whether it's enhancing the small neighborhood parks, upgrading and improving the larger parks, improving playgrounds, improving access to the river. So there's a bit of take care of what you have and enhance what you have. And then further down the list, we get to more specific things, such as acquiring land for the future, developing new things like dog park, or picnic shelters, or access to indoor space. So shifting a little bit to kind of the themes that we heard from the public, and also built on what we saw in the parks, put together some kind of high-level themes just to help organize what we've put into the plan. So as I just showed on the previous slide, a big section of the responses about improving or enhancing parks has to do with improving and enhancing existing facilities and taking care of what you have. So the first core theme, again, is to take care of what you have. So pay attention to the need to upgrade and enhance facilities to make sure that they remain usable, things such as upgrading and replacing certain playgrounds, improving tennis court surfacing, and in this case, transitioning a tennis court at Max Patterson to a multipurpose court, improving fencing, changing the striping, and accommodating tennis and pickleball and basketball and a few other sports, all in the same space. Resurfacing certain segments of trail, paying attention to compliance with the American Disability Act, ADA, and taking care of the vegetation and their station. Beyond the piece of take care of what you have, in terms of adding additional outdoor recreation options, there was some strong support for adding more picnic shelters across the park system. Right now, there's only a handful, and they're very heavily used and booked up very quickly, so finding a site or two or a few additional would be a big benefit to residents. Looking for ways to expand and continue to connect the trails that you have to accommodate loops or longer walks. Finding an option for an off-leash area, and we are suggesting a plan down at Melton Bar, finding a place in that site to do that. And then accommodating wildlife viewing and nature watching. You've got great access on the river, and you've got some really interesting upland, wetland areas, too, where you can kind of tell a story of water hydrology, native plants and native cultures even. So incorporating that into the park system will be interesting going forward. Another theme is finding some opportunities to acquire some parks to fill some gaps. There's a few maps within the document that identify three core areas that are gap areas, and what we did as a process in the mapping is we used computer maps to identify all of the existing park sites and dropped pins on the map, basically, like, what is Google Map, and we're trying to get directions somewhere. But those pins were specific to actual entry and access points to a park. So they weren't just around the edge of a property line, they were around specific entry points. So from those entry points, we travel quarter mile, half mile, mile, and we can create what we call walkshits around each park. And as we do that process, we can find areas where folks have relatively good access to parks and open space, and those areas that we call gap areas, where folks have to travel more than a half mile to get to a park. So there's three spots within the community that we identified as potential target areas that would benefit from future purchases, and that, again, would help fill the gap. It ties back to the survey findings that about forty percent suggest the need for more parks going forward. Another key theme is having to do with new activities and programs, and in this case, it was about activities for the community and for youth, so special events and programs for teens and youth, like partnerships with the school, district, or other providers. Now, beyond the high-level themes, I wanna hit on some of the specific recommendations that are more of a per-park line item basis. So Melton Bar and Doll Beach combined make up the bulk of your park system in terms of acreage. Wanna just spend a little bit of time here. So one suggestion is to conduct a site master plan to re-envision that park. As we walked through it, and as we saw other folks passing through, there's no clear distinction between what is Melton Bar Park and what is Doll Beach, in terms of where you are in that space. So it might be an interesting process to go through to redesign and rethink that park a little bit in terms of how it functions, and how people get informed about where they are and in what parts of parks they are in, and how they can gain access to the rest of the site. Beyond that, there's some suggestions about improvements to existing infrastructure, such as upgrading some play equipment, upgrading some parking, and accommodating fishing for folks who need ADA or special access. Again, great stretch of river, but there are limited, no formal places for folks, and wheelchairs do fish, whether it's a pier or some hard surface to fish from. Installing wildlife viewing and interpretive, again, here, you can tell a story about the park, you can tell a story about its location on the river, you can tell stories about what's in the river, natural heritage, natural history, and then a suggestion about locating a dog park at that site as well. At Max Patterson, I already suggested the idea of ... At Max Patterson, I already suggested the idea of revamping that tennis court to provide multipurpose sport play. With that, you need to replace and repair the fences and the gates around the court, resurface, re-stripe, and to potentially make that court itself much more usable because more and different sports can play there. Improving ADA accessibility to different elements of the park such as the benches and the tables. So, just for reference with regard to ADA as it relates to recreation and outdoor recreation, if you have benches like this one located in the grass, you should have about half of your benches accessible with a hard surface route. So, the same with the benches, and the benches would need to be of a certain style. So, those are the sorts of things we saw in the field. And then taking care of any damaged equipment and material you have in the park. With regard to other neighborhood parks, suggestion to conduct, again, a site master plan at Gladstone Nature Park to help guide the development and continued development of that site. Could include things such as nature play, picnic tables and bench, and formalizing the parking. There's a property that the city owns along Ridge Gate where it's, half of it is adjacent to the middle school and half of it on the opposite side of Ridge Gate. So, one suggestion is to take the piece that's adjacent to the middle school. It's actually a fairly small space, maybe twice the size of the room. Convert it to a small mini park and have that serve that neighborhood as a public park in addition to the adjacent school property, and potentially think about selling off the remainder piece that's on the opposite side of the street to potentially help finance those improvements that are suggested. And then, again, upgrading play equipment and safety fall surfacing. And at Robin Hood Park, improving accessibility and those routes to the various elements, whether it's tables or play equipment. Within the open spaces, a lot has to do with enhancing the environment and improving the vegetations, you're taking out invasives, you're managing the site to take care of the plants that are there. But in some cases, there may be opportunities to put short trail segments in or pass-through trails, some boardwalks with some interpretive signs to, again, help tell that story of the hydrology or the natural heritage of the site. This is the map I was talking through, and this is just a quick snapshot. So, the areas that are in kind of pinkish hues, the darker pink represents quarter mile walksheds, the lighter pink represents half mile walksheds. So, you can see fairly clearly that the areas in white are those areas where folks have to travel more than a half mile to get to a public park. So, again, this was the basis of our suggestions on acquisitions. And in terms of the total project costs, you've got the capital improvement plan in front of you. It equates to about, I think it's three point six million or three point two million, give or take. And the intent is that over a ten-year window, those projects get shipped away. In terms of funding options, right now, the bulk of the funding is via general fund, but, and also park SD, wait, no, park SD. But another suggestion for funding could be the enactment of park utility fee, much like your storm and, from our tour fee. And that would go toward operations and maintenance, not capital. And that would help Jim and his staff have the staff power, the resources to care and maintain for the park system going forward. Other common funding tools would be a general obligation bond to maybe pay for some large improvements, whether it's trail enhancements or improvements at Melton Bar. Consideration of Park American District, it's noted in the plan, but it's downplayed because there's probably limited benefit to the community, but we wanted to acknowledge it in there. As well as grants are a strong source of capital improvements for the park system, but they also require match dollars. Other things that we considered for the implementation ideas involve partners coordinating and continuing to coordinate with the school district, both as a land owner and facility holder, but also as a partner for programming. There's some interest in starting to grow programs for teen and youth, and the school district may be well-suited to help conduct or accommodate third parties to come in and provide services to enable those sorts of programs. Continuing to coordinate with service and community groups, much like Boy Scouts who were here earlier, to do specific site improvements and other specific user groups that are out there, whether it's RC users, BMX users, community gardeners, dog park folks. Engage those specific users to help make specific improvements to specific sites. And that really just wraps up the high-level summary of what's in the plan document. Again, there's a whole chapter on goals and policies that I didn't touch on here, but if you had a chance to look through that, it, again, summarizes more generally the direction that is suggested in the plan. And as Jim noted earlier, our hope is that we can have some discussions tonight, get your feedback about what's on the plan, edits and changes we'd like to see, and we'll take those in over the next two weeks and reformulate the plan for final review and approval by City Council on December 12th. Is that, any questions, comments?
So, a lot of the things I have marked in here are formatting, or you're missing a city, or that type of thing. You probably just want us to list that out and email it to you-
That'd be great, or just hand off the marker copy, yeah.
Okay.
I would prefer not to be the first one, since I took so much time last time.
Well, okay, I have a question about selling off the piece of land that goes to the middle school. Would that affect the path that the children have to go from the road behind it, which I guess is, is that Ridge Gate?
Ridge Gate, right.
From Ridge Gate to the back of-
No.
Derek's. Just want to cross the street from the back.
Yeah. I didn't realize until we got looking at this, because I parked, I had parked there for years when coaching youth football, and we used the field at Kracksberger and parked on that on the backside. That, knew the path was there, but it crossed from there is a black, well, let's see.
Blackberries.
It's blackberries and a lot of trees.
It's wooded.
Wooded, okay, sure.
Kind of a triangular shape.
And that's part of the park, but it's never been utilized.
Okay.
And I didn't, like, I didn't realize until we got looking at this here a few months ago that that was part of the park that's across, you know, the street that goes into the backside of Kracksberger.
And the segment with the pathway is the segment we're suggesting developed into a small park.
Okay, so the pathway would still be there, because it's a lot like the kids.
Right, right. The connection between Ridge Gate and school would be more formalized.
Right. And nobody, like, it's not utilized at all, that other piece, the, like I said, well, the blackberries have kind of taken over.
Okay, thank you.
Is that considered a park, and then therefore we have to go to a vote to sell it? Is that correct? Or you don't consider it a park?
It is not considered a park in the inventory.
Or is it just a city on the space?
It's a city on the open space.
Okay.
But I'll leave the fine level detail to staff to determine.
Yeah. See, there's a picture of it right there.
So, this is the segment that is adjacent to the school property, which is here.
They have the path through it.
We suggest potentially renovating to a house, a small park on site, and it has a path that goes, kind of right through here. This is the remainder open space that, as you can see, has residential houses abutting it. It has a bit of street frontage, but it really doesn't have a lot of value for restoration.
So, what kind of response do you think the houses abutting that would give if it were to be developed?
One option is to sell it to the homeowners that surround it and make it not developable. That's what they did in that property, different like that.
So, I don't think our code currently has anything for green space, but it is something we've talked about wanting.
I noticed something in the introductory material, and I know that there's a tendency to borrow something from documents that already exist when describing the general conditions. But the city needs to settle once and for all whether we are a city of 2.48 square miles in area or four miles, four square miles in area, because it does make a difference when you calculate population density. And different sources will have different amounts. I believe it's the 2.48 square mile that may be the more accurate figure, and that would only make your density higher, and you were already kind of off the charts on density anyway, so it wouldn't change any of the recommendations. But we might strive for more consistency in that one statistic regarding our own city. The other thing I noticed in there, I don't think, I don't think the surveys asked people whether compliance with ADA was a priority for them. It wasn't listed among the high priority things. But clearly, that was a thing that probably the landscape architects and others who examined the property felt that was one of the great deficiencies, was the lack of that kind of an accessibility. And I think there was also a gap between the amount of the population that would be considered senior adults, and, you know, they comprised, I forget what percentage of the population, but a very relatively small percent of the usage of parks, which I was a little concerned about and wondered whether that had to do with the ADA compliance. But then I saw an article from a national group on parks and recreation who had done a survey of parks across the country, and they said almost the same thing. Twenty percent of the population is over age sixty, only four percent of them use parks. But to the value of the physical exercise that can be gained in using a park, their strong recommendation was more walking loops. So, that was really something that when older adults use parks, other than just for sitting and relaxing, it's a value. And so, since you were recommending that, too, I think that's important to underscore. To get a broader, more inclusive use of our parks, make them, you know, connect some of those trails and make it possible to walk from one to another or to loop in the same park, I think will attract more usage.
Good point.
Okay, I have a question on page 27, which is facility inventory. There's the Charles Ames Memorial City Park and the Olton Wetlands are not listed in the parks inventory on the website, so are they, those deleted from our website on purpose? Are we not listing there because we don't want to acknowledge them as parks?
Oh, they should.
I would think they would be.
And also, the Ridge Gate open space, I'm assuming that's the Ridge Gate tracks, that's what we're talking about.
That's what we're saying.
Okay.
So, Mayor, which ones did you identify are missing from the website?
Charles Ames Memorial City Park.
Okay.
And the Olton Wetlands.
Okay, we'll make that correction.
That's the website or off this page here?
Website.
They're on this page, they're not on the website, so we will fix that.
Okay. And then the parks that are following that facility inventory, if they could follow either in order that it's listed here so that it's easier to follow, or have them alphabetical or something that makes that more consistent.
Yeah, just for reference, the way we structured it was alphabetical by type.
By type, okay. That's kind of what I figured. Who owns the ball fields? Are those like Derek's fields? Do the owners Derek's field, or is that the school, the city owns Derek's?
Yeah, we own and maintain it. Well, I mean, there's a partnership. There's a group that maintains the bathrooms, and then we do the field, so.
All right. So, okay, so there's neighboring parks. Okay, and then, so the other ones are all owned by the school, so they're not going to be listed on here.
Which ones?
The other ball fields, the one at Wetland, the ones, those are off school. Okay. All right. Gladstone Nature Park, we just want to make sure we have restroom, upstairs, permanent Glen Echo Wetlands, delineation report, that's something that we're talking about. Other people I'm talking to, I'm going to draw my notes here.
So, I'll bring up something on page four, and I am fully aware this will sound like a nifty. So, the first paragraph is talking about the type 2 diabetes. I just want to make clear that that's no longer considered in scientific evidence. The National Institute of Health funded a study that was released in the cellular and molecular gastronology and botology in May of this year, a thing they believe is bacteria-related. So, I want to be careful that we're not pushing science that the National Institute of Health no longer believes is accurate. And then the other thing, the social and community benefits, it's talking about people who are more active, are more likely to have better mental and physical health, and, you know, people who are more involved with the community and all that. And I want to be careful there because that's a supposition that the people have an extroverted personality type, and people who are introverted are more likely to be anxious by doing those activities. And I don't want to see, making assumptions about half the community, you know, are going to be better off if we're forcing them to be involved.
All right. Glen Echo Wetlands and Olton Wetlands, we need to do delineation, everybody. I don't see a whole lot of-
Should we make that just a standard across the board on any of the wetlands?
Well, we only, yeah, we should, but anyway. I don't see anything on here that brings those up to a level that encourages participation in the wetlands, like viewing areas, some type of an educational outreach type of facility or boardwalk or something. So, I would like to see somehow those incorporated into the legislature.
And on both of those pages, the design opportunities, do you suggest boardwalks would be interpreted?
Oh, interpretive, yeah. But I don't know, do we need to be more specific so that we could get grants for this type of project?
Generally, you don't need to be overly specific, so long as it's in the plan and you can talk to the general need in the community and the need at the site, you should be fine.
I just want to make sure that we're not limited by not listing it.
Yeah, because I could see them being essential as learning parks for wetlands.
Yeah, and there's a lot of money out there available, so I just want to make sure that's very clear that we could buy two of them if we want.
On page nine, the population block, the numbers there, and this, maybe Jim can note, so the TSP and this document don't appear to correlate, and we know why, right? That they're using different zones to talk about the TSP. But I think it's going to be better for us if our documents seem to have the same numbers. I think it'd be better if the TSP used the numbers that we have here personally.
But in that particular TSP segment, they're talking about paths, and it doesn't go outside, so it's-
I understand. So, all I'm bringing up here is it appears like the documents are inconsistent with each other. And so, for whatever we need to do, they need to look like they correlate and are consistent with each other.
Or least call it out.
Well, I was going to say, put in, on the TSP, put another column with, this is what the actual city-
City boundaries versus the path boundary. It's just city boundaries.
Yeah, I do think these numbers are better for us. It's just, I want to make sure that people reading the documents don't think, well, these don't, they're not the same, right? And while we're here, the other page, wherever you have these boxes down here like this, there's not enough contrast here for people who have low eyesight. So, you might change the color scheme on these boxes to make it stand out better.
And there's several of them that are that way.
I would say all of them, yeah.
Okay.
No, I know. No, that was one of mine.
Well, then you go first.
No, 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 no. No, we've had a lot better.
And Jim and I talked about that other problem right there, if you're looking at as well.
Okay. So, yeah, appreciate it.
One of the other things I noticed in formatting is sometimes you had photographs or maps that were on a page, and I think if they were, if the orientation was changed, even though it would require people to turn the document sideways, you would take up a lot more of the page and therefore be a little more readable if they were formatted out.
That may be based on how that was printed. The, all of the maps and the CIP that are intended for the plan are intended for the The, all of the maps and the CIP that are intended to be 11 by 17 foot full. So when they get printed, it's a final version, they will be a Z full with the document.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, we try to keep costs down a little bit so it may.
I understand.
Keep some things on the, on a draft.
Okay, okay, so you're aware of that, good.
Rent and printing.
So.
Well, as I say, since we're talking about the Ridge Gate tract on 82, the first paragraph is talking about the nature park. And then the second one, uh, doesn't mention a park by name. So, uh, at first I just assumed it was the, uh, the nature park. When, but when it got into how it was split on two sides of the street, I realized it was Ridge Gate. So that needs to be inserted in there somewhere.
On, uh.
And I like the middle paragraph on the other column.
You did write, good job.
On page 18, you're talking about the 25% response rate.
Yes.
And, and you talked about how 74% of people who responded had said they had visited a park. I'm just curious whether the 75% who didn't respond, could it be because they're not visiting the parks? I, I, we don't have the information, right? But, um, that was one of the things I was wondering about because we don't know anything about 3/4 of the population that didn't respond to the, and in total, we only had 5% of the population actually surveyed. I think all the park stuff is very important. I just want to make sure we're clear that when we're talking about these numbers, and there is a spot on page, um, I got it here. Page number 61, where sometimes you say residents and actually it's respondents. Like it'll say, uh, you know, 91% of residents, and it's actually not 91% residents, it's 91% of respondents, which was only 5% of people. So I just want to make sure we're careful about that wherever we're talking about them, that we keep them separate.
I do appreciate your acknowledgement on, on page 18 that, uh, you know, people chose to respond. And so you didn't, you didn't select them statistically. Uh, it may not, it says the results are not necessarily representative of all Gladstone residents. So we heard from people who, who had the greatest interest in parks, clearly, and that input is invaluable. Uh, and, and, you know, to try to generalize that to the whole community, that's a stretch. But I think, uh, you know, that what you, what you're able to, uh, to draw from those who were motivated to participate is very helpful information.
On page two, under core values, you refer to the city council's five core goals, its whole mission. Could you add what those five goals are so that people know?
I'm sorry, that last paragraph?
The five goals, the city council's five goals.
Last paragraph.
Got it.
Last paragraph, yeah.
So I actually just went and got those, and I'm assuming you're talking about from the five-year strategic plan.
Yes.
To enhance the livability in Gladstone, address critical civic building needs, ensure a highly qualified workforce, maintain the health and long-term vibrancy of the city of Gladstone, ensure financial stewardship and long-term municipal financial stability.
So the ones that you're referring to here, if you could just add them?
So page 21, this is for you, Jim.
Page what?
21. So my side left, you and I went back and forth a few times about it not working. And the last time I sent you an email, uh, on April 19th, I think, um, I gave you some feedback about why there was a server error. Did we ever get any feedback from them about getting that fixed?
I don't remember, trying to remember that conversation, that was a while ago.
Yeah, it was.
Remember we had that conversation?
Remember a conversation about?
Yeah, the ATPU, IVV six.
Sorry you had trouble with it, but I honestly don't recall what happened with that.
I can't either, but I know everybody I talked to and me trying on multiple computers could get into it, so I just, I don't know.
Okay.
Don't know what the.
So is that your site or?
Yeah, it's a third-party vendor that we use.
So, um, uh, maybe I could work with one or both of you at some point to make sure we get that clarified because if it's affecting me, it's going to affect other people as well.
Yeah, I can't find anybody that it affected or any computer that it, so I don't, I don't understand that. But once this is all done, that site, that was.
It's going to be gone.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that a bug?
Page 107. Is that correct?
Can I see a paper?
Yep. The rest of them are going to be in an email.
Yeah.
So I did have some problems with some statistics on page 54. Actually 52 through 55, but, um, so it's talking about how, um, 80% of adults who are 18 and above who had PE in, in high school were active during this timeframe. But on the previous page, page 52, it's talking about how only 48.4% were active in the last year. And on page 54, it's also saying that they cited health issues and, um, and time as the obstacle. So if only 48.4% of the people were active in the year, I don't understand how 80% of people in, say, my age range, which goes everybody in my age range that's in high school, were active. Those two numbers are completely different.
Where on 52 are you looking?
52, the 2016 outdoor participation report, it's saying that out of 142 million Americans, only 48.4% in outdoor activity once in the year. But on page 54, it's saying twice that.
Sure, and I can't recall the specifics, but this is referring or drawing reference to two distinct reports.
Sure. It, it seems unrealistic that the numbers would be that different. 48 versus 80% are the big numbers.
But it's talking about two different things, I think.
Yeah, it was.
Well, they're saying that they were active at least once in the last year, right? And here they're saying, you know, 80% are active.
Well, who had PE, 80% of adults ages 18 plus who had PE in school were active compared to 61% of adults who didn't.
Right, whereas the total was 48.4%. So I, I understand that's two different statistics. I'm just saying that it, it, it read as inaccurate based on the one I had read on the previous page.
Yeah, we'll take a look back through the city to see if we can clean up the language a little bit. The 48% could include kids or something.
Maybe.
Doesn't say who that includes.
We've got more numbers than yours.
No, I was just labeling the, uh, chapters at the top.
Oh, okay.
Because it, it, we didn't have tabs and it was hard to kind of keep track going.
Other people have more comments? I still have a couple, but.
Go ahead, Melody.
Um, on page 113, you have a list of, um, things to do to enhance residents' awareness. And on that first one, we're talking about framing the service around health benefits to the safety. I think nature in itself might be one there as well. I think a lot of people go out to be in nature, especially here in Oregon. And on the last bullet point, you talk about the Google Maps thing. Something else you might test there is Uber's ability to navigate to those parks. So, you know, take, uh, take an Uber and say, hey, take me to this park and see if they can get you there because they're going to be using a different mapping service. And then on page 112, the comment about the North Quackmouth Park and Recreation District. The one concern I'd have about that, uh, has to do with how the library district worked out. And that is that, um, we don't allow vote by district. So we don't allow everybody within a district to vote on things that affect that entire district. So right now, people, say, you know, Grove cannot vote on things that might affect them within the district. And so I would want to be careful about that if we were to join another district where people may not be allowed to vote on things that they're in the district, but they don't get a voting right. So that would just be something we want to keep an eye on.
That came up at the, the parks meeting also in regards to, uh, joining and, uh. Yeah, the, yeah, the parks and the, uh, the reason that there is it, it's a, uh, it's an option is what, and, uh, so that's what it was. So I would need to leave it in. And, uh, you know, uh, from day one, the, the city, because I was on, uh, I think I was on the, the planning or, or budget committee back when the North Quackmouth, you know, Park District was formed and, and we were approached about joining it is that, um, we didn't want to lose, uh, the control, kind of like what Happy Valley is, is experiencing now. And so, uh, I foresee us never joining them. But it, but it is, but it is a viable option for funding, uh, you know, in, in the future. So it, it needs to be there, but.
Yeah, I don't mind being there.
Don't lose any sleep over the fact that, you know, it's being contemplated because it's not.
I don't mind it being there, I'm just saying if we, if we are going to contemplate any districts, we have to make sure that people who are affected can vote, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Is that it? Anybody else?
I just wanted to make a comment. I've been involved with the thought of this master plan for the parks for a number of years. And I commend everybody that's helped get it this far. I can remember back when we were voting on where to put the dog park. And it was decided at that time, before we made that decision and put up the fences and whatever, that we really needed a master plan for the parks. And that's kind of how this whole thing got started. And, uh, what was interesting though, when I got a question about this, one of the items that got this thing going was the dog park. And I noticed on the financial plan that one of the last expenditures, which at that time it seemed important, but one of the latest expenditures on this $3.6 million budget is the dog park. And I was just curious of how that went to that spot.
That's a good question, and let me just pull my copy over here so I remind myself where I'm looking at.
Forty thousand, 2028, I don't get it, 26 or something?
Well, I think what we tried to do with the overall capital plan is balance all the costs out across the city, the different parks and with an effort to enhance and improve what you've got first, in essence, before adding too much new stuff. And again, this is just a guide and based on discussions in the parks board or with city council, this can shift to be in next year's budget. So, and so long as it's noted in the plan, it gives guidance to Jim and his staff to think about it as a project and how it gets represented in the city budget would be the next step.
Okay.
So the date is not really specific at this point?
Any other questions? Anything for us?
Uh, if you have other specific feedback that you want to offer, send it through Jim and he'll give it to me. Otherwise, I appreciate all your time and thought.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Steve.
Want the clicker, Jim?
No, you can leave it right there. Does everybody want to take a, take a five-minute break before I get going on my phone book? Appetite funding, you know?
All right, everybody.
Fees and stuff like that, I thought it was. These are our new design construction standards.
Good, very good.
So our design and construction standards, you know, we started these, like I've said a couple of different times, I started this shortly after I got here when I realized, what? We don't have a design and construction. So what we did with this is we did it all in-house with the help of all of our internal staff and our city engineer. We basically, we were probably into this staff time, which is most of our expense, I estimate something just under $25,000. Most cities I've been involved in, in this year, spending well over a hundred with a consultant and everything else. Thank you, City of West Lynn, for giving us these to start as a base and doing a lot of, you know, searching in our Gladstone code, changing things and making it fit in Gladstone.
So this all correlates with our current codes?
Yeah. And if it doesn't, we will change that because this is a living document. I, as you can see, um, I've been going through it again and I found some things, you know, some things that are out of order alphabetically, just some minor stuff, but this is, this is, this is the way it is. I've been through two of these, actually the City of West Lynn got theirs from the City of Gresham. I came to the City of Gresham as well, by the way. So we spent a lot of time doing them there and they migrated over there, but that actually happened before I went there. And we redid them, we had consultants, engineers, all this stuff doing this stuff, and you're constantly finding things. So that's why this is a living document. So this has missed, I don't know if many of you know, but this is, this is going to cover public infrastructure. This is not going to cover how many windows are in the front of the house and stuff, that's your Title 17 that does that. This is, how deep does the water line go? How big is the water line? Fire flow, you know, do you have services on hydral? I don't know. What size meter box and that's really what this is. There's a lot of ORS references in here when it comes to contracting and stuff, so that'll be nice to have. Imagine that. Basically, we're going to start doing some projects. What's that?
Contracting?
I know, they have those out there. AWWA standards, APWA, all these things out there that have standards and this references a lot of those. So as those standards change, we'll change them, try to keep these up.
At what point do we make sure that David has a copy to reference when he's helping us with planning commission?
Once we can get this approved, it's going to be available for anybody online, it's going to be searchable, and we're going to only make certain, we're only going to make a certain amount of copies because as we update them, we're going to send out copies and we can't have 30 of them out there to update page two in section three, you know, type of thing.
But we'll keep one up here maybe?
Absolutely, we'll, the county will have one, our engineer will have one, we'll have some down at Public Works. And then it'll be online, so anybody can go online and search for fire hydrant and you're going to get every page that has the word fire hydrant, you know, type of stuff, so. So again, this is a living document, we'll probably be changing this thing probably a couple of times a year as we, as we notice. I just noticed some little things, and if you guys didn't notice anything, we'll add that and we'll try to get that in the final document. But we're just going to constantly go through and if we do a project, we actually used this as a pilot project on our Addy Street project with county. And we did find some things going through that, field lock gaskets, those rules have changed for the, the materials, so we updated that.
More language.
Yeah, exactly, so try not to get too much into the weeds on that. But what we do plan on doing when we make these changes, we plan on notifying the planning commission and the council. Hey, we made this change on page whatever and for whatever reason, we'll let you know so you don't have.
You put that in a monthly report added?
We can do it that way if you like, but it probably won't be monthly, I mean, I'm guessing it's tough time of year.
If it comes out during that monthly inclusion report.
Yeah, that'll work, yeah, just to get the information out through you and of course to Clay and whoever else is involved. But what I see happening is your guys' um, your guys' um, conditions of approval are just going to have the same language like you do with Title 17. It's going to, basically you will design and construct per Gladstone municipal, or Gladstone design and construction standards.
We can do that.
So if they change, they have to.
So can you draft specifically what you'd like that language to be and we'll start adding it to all applications?
Yeah, I actually have a draft here, but we'll run that by Clay and make sure that's all watered.
Yeah, I mean, for now, we'll have to add it each time, we'll have to mention it on each application until we get a chance to actually update our code to require it.
Right.
Do you get a copy of all the applications?
Yes.
So it comes directly to you?
Yes, and I'm going to get better at making comments that I don't have comments because that's one of the things I haven't done, oh, that's, you know, that's simply home, I don't have any comments. So I'm going to get better, and that was a comment made by, came in with the planning commission. You should at least let us know you have no comments, and so I'll get better at that. I do see them all.
Yeah, and just to clarify, that's just so we know that they saw it. Because Clay's comment was usually that he hadn't, he hadn't received any word.
I think I sent them an email.
Yeah, and we just wanted to make sure they weren't.
And that's good because I, I was curious about that because there's some new development that's going in over on River Road and, and it's condos, I'm not sure, apartments or something, and I thought.
Haven't seen that, yeah.
And, and I was wondering about that because I've driven by there a few times and I thought, well, I wonder if that's ever.
Oh, is it up the hill?
It has to be. No, it's between Glen Echo and.
That's not city.
Oh, that's not city there?
Yeah, you actually stopped where you started going up the hill on River Road.
Oh, really?
But then the block line goes up to Tebow's.
Oh, okay.
If you look at our map, it's, it's kind of weird up in that area.
Yeah, okay.
Could be county.
I did not know that, interesting. I did not know that. Interesting.
So one of the things I do wanna point out, you know, sometimes you're nervous about, oh my gosh, what if a contractor or somebody catches us in a spot? Well, there's some pretty awesome language in this general requirement, and some of it is basically, if we screwed up, you're still doing it right. You know, I mean, it really is, it, it really protects us. And if we have conflicting standards, like say the code says one thing and this says another, it could happen. We haven't gone, you know, we don't, didn't read them both and compare them that much, the stronger will prevail. It says it right in here. So we really try to cover our bases for things that aren't right, you know, 'cause it happens, so.
So what do you think from us?
Okay, I guess I can quit talking.
No, 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 no.
No, what I plan to do is our, so our next steps, no, I don't, I don't wanna go through this unless you guys want to, page by page. But our next step is, if you have any comments, get it to us in the next week, and we wanna come to council on the twelfth, get this thing adopted. And if you have comments after that, let me know, we'll change it. It's just, we need, we really need this a couple of times.
So, let's talk about the update process. So, it's gonna be a living document, and you're asking council to approve it initially. Let's say we, there's some update after that. Are you gonna go to council to do those updates, or how you wanna do it?
No, we're, that's where we're just gonna let you know. But if you have a comment that's like, you noticed something that's not right, doesn't match the code, or let us know, and we'll, we'll put it in our regular updates. When we make the changes, we'll push out in our monthly report, which that makes the most sense. Hey, we changed page two, section three, and for this reason, or whatever it is.
Okay.
So, yeah, so this-
And we don't, do we have to vote on it, or just, just, okay, just?
When we write up the resolution, we're gonna write up the resolution that is gonna allow staff to make minor changes. It's not like we're gonna go in here and change the whole design section, you know? It's just gonna be, allows us to do it, but we will notify you when we do that. So it's not gonna be, hey, wait a minute. So then if you have a problem with it, obviously, go back and change it.
And, and just to clarify and reiterate, this is not taking place of additional section of code that needs to get approval prior to something getting the approval of the planning commission.
We've never had one of these.
Other than the general statement, other than the general statement that they agree to comply with it, there's nothing that where we're gonna have to check off the boxes for each individual section in, in doing pre-approvals.
No.
Okay.
No, and actually, we reference our chapter seven, or it's Title Seventeen in here quite a bit, so if it changes, we'll have that there.
Okay.
So, yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty excited about this, and I know it just looks like a phone book, but it's, it's, it's pretty cool. It's gonna give us the hammer to quit begging contractors to do it right, but make them do it right.
Thank you for taking this on.
That's a huge deal.
How do we eat all of our staff? They've spent a lot, they've spent a lot of time in this going.
You know, the other thing I noticed, Jim, too, I was just commenting on it, it's, it's really easy to go through it. This can be cumbersome, a lot of things, they put these together, and they'll do a lot of cross-referencing. I like that you're calling out stuff, and if somebody wants to go on, they just have to, on their own, perform their own due diligence, I think that's smart, because it makes it a lot easier to deal with. If you're gonna stumble into something, you see it, and then you know, oh, I better pay some more attention to this. So I congratulate you and your staff on that.
Thank you. And one of the things you'll see-
It's easy to read and understand a definition.
And one of the things you'll see, you don't see it in our printing documents, and we wanted to save a little money here, but when we print these off, the few that we're gonna have, each section's gonna be color-coded. So storm will be green, it'll be green back here. So if you're looking at storming, it's blue, blue, blue.
Right.
Water's gonna be blue, you're gonna be able to go blue, blue, blue. I mean, it's really a, it's, it's, it's gonna be a cool document when it's done, and then the divider pages are gonna be, stand out on the floor, so it's gonna be very, very, our guys out in the field are gonna be able to go-
Water should be blue.
No, you need to like that, you know?
Is this already in line with the T S P, or will the T S P require us to change this?
Nope, we, we have comments in, our comments out of here are with the consultant right now. We're like matching up our, when we're gonna require a traffic study and stuff like that. So we're still working those out, and that may be some of our first changes we do if they do some tweaking. It's still comments going on in the transportation system. So, yeah, no, they have a whole copy that's in the commented on.
Okay.
So, but granted, we're not done with the T S P, so if some things change, we will have to incorporate those in there.
Any more questions, or?
Well, I have just one more comment, so, so, and I think Maliko was talking about this earlier. You know, one of the things that might be a good idea is like, once every, once or twice a year, maybe have staff do the quick look see, so that you've got, you're going back to referencing, I know, this, I put out plans all the time, and they get put on a shelf. You know, and this one's not, it's an active document that you're gonna be using and a lot of work. But it's always good to have that staff member maybe take a day and do the look see and make sure that-
Go check all the references.
Right, just to double-check references and, and keep it just really living, like you said.
No, we, we really do plan on doing that.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
In fact, I've had someone go through it already, and that's why I got some red tags on already, 'cause it's been through so many times. You actually start a paradigm, you know, you start not seeing stuff.
You need a clean set of eyes.
And then you give it a break, and then you go through it, does this make sense, and then, yeah.
So it also works in your favor, too, is if you've signed off, or you've had somebody sign off on it once a year or twice a year, then nobody's coming back to you to say, you know, you're not keeping up with the standard, 'cause it is a standard, so.
Exactly.
I, I mean, a lot, I've worked with a lot of government agencies that just don't do that on the planning side, so.
Right, exactly. And one of the things I just wanted to point out here now, you're saying that, is all of our plans, there's gonna be a standard for how our plans look. So our plans are gonna have a cover page, and it's gonna look like this, it spells it out here. The plans will be this size. And one of the things on here, if I can find it real quick, we have a stamp that we put on the front of all of our plans, and it basically is the city engineer approval and the public works director approval. And on that, it's got caveat that says, if things change in the field, we'll tell you what, I mean, it's, it's just awesome. Basically, you always have a contract, well, it doesn't say anything, it's like, we'll flip it over to the front page and look at this. And they, and if it doesn't have a signature on it, those plans don't mean crap to us, basically. So it's a, it's a, it's a good set. I've been involved doing three of these for the different cities I've worked with, so I got a little bit of experience with it, and I've been out there in the contractors, working with them, and knowing what works and what doesn't work. So I'm, I'm pretty excited about this document. I think it's gonna be really good for the city. And we will, we will keep it active and-
Everybody has to hear to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank your staff.
Oh, yeah, definitely, and so, yeah, our plan is to bring this to you guys on the twelfth for a council.
Good, all right, well, thank you.
Come on, stop with any other things.
So, does anybody have anything else, work session-wise?
Oh, I do have one quick thing. It's not really work session, but Ryan Nielsen, they did start the heavy work today, so on the eleventh of September, will be another meeting down there. And instead of having them here, they're just gonna go down and show us what they've done, so if anybody's interested.
What time on the eleventh?
Probably eight or eight-thirty-ish is when they do it.
In the morning?
And-
Could we put it on the calendar now that we have this great website?
Uh, let me check. Let me ask and see if Bobby wants that much or not.
Also, working with Jim, we found out that Clay said that the county arborist has resigned.
Oh.
Retired, actually, so the county arborist.
Oh, okay.
So planning commission currently always tells developers they have to coordinate with the county arborist for street trees.
Right.
So we will find out during the next planning commission how Clay wants us to proceed on that, but as of right now, there isn't one, so.
Metro has this really robust street tree program, so maybe that might be the best way to refer.
Yeah, I mean, they might be getting a replacement or something. I just wanted to make sure you guys are aware that that person doesn't exist right now.
All right, I can't see what time it is.
It's five minutes to seven.
Oh, my gosh, okay, I guess we're done, it's five minutes to seven.